Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order, and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a late addition I'm hoping to make to the agenda, a submission of four nominations to various committees. Is there a motion to add four recommended appointments to the Appointments and Resignations section of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries, and we'll add that. We're going to actually begin tonight with a public hearing on a proposed ordinance concerning the number of alternates to the Planning and Zoning Commissions. This ordinance is intended to correct an omission that occurred during the last charter revision. By state statute, the number of alternates elected to planning and zoning needs to be in the charter. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Seeing none, is there...
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Sure.
Nobody?
Please, sleep.
It is. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the public hearing is closed. Would anyone like to speak in public audience tonight? I'll begin with Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Recently, there was an article in the Hartford Current reporting on the closing of the Flower Bridge for the construction of a park. According to the article, First Electman Eric Wellman stated, and I quote, "Wellman proposed that after construction, residents will be given the opportunity to picnic and canoe along the river, creating an overall more interactive experience," end quote. Was First Electman Eric Wellman aware that any water activity on the river from the park would require state and federal permits? The area that accommodates using boating on the river is the crew launching area on town-owned property for access to the water. According to the town posting on June 12, 2019, 30 business owners, town officials and members, it's a quote, "Members of the Economic Development Commission, EDC, gathered at Westminster School to discuss issues facing business owners in the town of Simsbury and how the town can help make a better place to do business. From signage regulations to parking, the group discussed challenges facing current business owners and those looking to open businesses here in the town, and what we could do to change it," end quote. Under Town Culture, quote, "Other challenges include parking and traffic control, signages, restrictions, and communication between local and state government and businesses. Town manager Maria Capriola has been working to foster a customer-service-oriented town hall with culture of, quote, 'how we can help.'" The Board of Selectmen approved the closing of the Flower Bridge, impacting the wedding season and impacting the banquet halls. This is counter to the mission of the EDC. The Flower Bridge was closed during the height of the wedding season, leaving the banquet facility with weddings reserved a year in advance that used the Flower Bridge for a photo op. The Flower Bridge is a marketing tool for weddings. Now the bride and groom will have to Photoshop themselves in the Flower Bridge into their wedding album, and the businesses are receiving the complaints. There are businesses that complain about enforcing signage violations in a timely manner. Recently, there was a rush to judgment with a, quote, "stop work order," end quote, causing a business time and money to rectify the mistake. An apology was written to the owner for the misunderstanding. This is not business-friendly. The Board of Selectmen give out a baits and waivers like candy to special interest groups that impact other businesses that do not receive this treatment. The Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts PAC, a private nonprofit organization, has received thousands of dollars in waivers for permits and reduced payments for police overtime. All private-duty police jobs by private businesses in town pay the higher costs. EverSource pays the highest taxes in town, and they are required to pay the higher cost of police overtime. The additional money from overtime is used by the police to support special equipment, lowering their budget. Is this business-friendly? To justify the lower fees of waivers, the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center members testified before the Board of Selectmen that they have lost money and need reduced fees to be competitive in signing up concerts. However, after reviewing the 990 federal tax returns submitted in 2016, the PAC's total assets were $110,034, and in 2017, their total assets were $186,533, an increase in assets. Did the Board of Selectmen or elected officials representing the taxpayers ask the right questions during the discussions? Are they more interested in getting re-elected than protecting the taxpayers who pay the bills? A recent article in the Hartford Current listed the three outdoor evening concerts in Greater Hartford. Listed were the 23 town concerts. Missing from the article was Simsbury. Simsbury has the private PAC, charging fees for concerts on town property, entrance fees for events, and promotes events with people parking in all the private and public parking areas, leaving businesses without parking, and roads closed that inconvenience property owners. The PAC has fenced off Simsbury Meadows with a green fabric that detracts from the park. Simsbury has the only park that places fencing around the park to deter people from enjoying the park. The green fencing is unkept and eyesore, and the complete antithesis of the image of the town Simsbury wants to protect. First Electman Eric Wellman appears to be concerned with regulating vaping to restrict the use of addictive substances. There have been lengthy discussions about addiction at Community for Care without any discussion of the PAC's concerts having the attendees using marijuana on town land without any enforcement. With an increase in vaping and the use of marijuana at concerts, several people who are asthmatic are affected by the smoke. Driving under the influence is an accident waiting to happen. If the town is really serious about reducing the increase in addiction in our society, there should be an elimination of using addictive substances on town property. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury@Twitter, at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Dave?
Dave Ryan, 20 West Sledge Road, West Simsbury. I am a member of the PAC Board. I'm not here in the Truth Mission. I'm here to tell you that Friday night is the first Talkeet Mountain Music Festival concert of the season. The weather is supposed to be great, and it's going to be music of Motown. People will be dancing in the streets, and I want to make sure everybody is aware of it and comes down and joins in the fun. The next Friday, the 5th of July, is a Celebrate America concert, which will have all the wonderful music, 1812 Overture and so forth, followed by fireworks as usual. And with good weather, we'll have maybe 8,000 or 10,000 people there, so come enjoy it, have a picnic. And then come on the 12th, it's the music of Frank Sinatra. That's on July 12, on Friday. The following week is Swan Lake and Sleeping Beauty, the 19th of July. And the final concert is July 26, the music of Elton John. So there are tickets available at Fitzgerald's. There are tickets at the ticket booth, which, by the way, we gave to the town. And I think our audit report, which will be delivered to you at your next meeting, will show that was a $63,000 donation. But we thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else want to speak in public audience tonight? Okay. So we'll move on to our presentation tonight. I'm pleased to share a proclamation that I've prepared to acknowledge and celebrate LGBTQ Pride Month. LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated each June, coinciding with the anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion in the June of 1969. So this is the 50th anniversary, and we welcome tonight many visitors, a couple of which I'll ask to say a few words after I read the proclamation. And in celebration of LGBTQ Pride Month, the town will be painting a rainbow crosswalk down by the Performing Arts Center, which is going to be up through the full Talkeet Mountain Music Season Festival. It's my hope that when people see it, whether they live in Simsbury or are coming from out of town, that it'll send a message about the kind of community that Simsbury strives to be, one where everyone who lives here, visits here, works here, or learns here feels fully welcome to bring and be their whole selves. I thought that it would be nice if the Board were to formally endorse the proclamation, if that's something that members wanted to do. And I'd like to ask, to see if there's a motion to declare the month of June LGBTQ Pride Month in the town of Simsbury.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously? And now it's my pleasure to read the proclamation. Whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities are an integral part of Connecticut's population, and whereas the fight for dignity and equality for LGBTQ people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to make this a more inclusive society, and whereas the town of Simsbury celebrates the diversity of its people and their right to live their lives out loud, free of discrimination, fear, and prejudice, and whereas the month of June is recognized internationally as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Riots of June 1969, when people in the LGBTQ community in New York City, at great personal and physical risk to themselves, courageously fought back against the increasing hostility and discrimination they faced from police at the Stonewall Inn, and whereas the Stonewall Riots gave birth to the LGBTQ rights movement, and this year marks its 50th anniversary, and whereas the town of Simsbury remains committed to protecting the civil rights of the LGBTQ community, and whereas there remains much work to do across the world to protect the safety and security of the LGBTQ community against the threat of violence and discrimination, and whereas every human being has the right to live their lives openly as who they are. Now, therefore, I, Eric Wellman, First Electman of the town of Simsbury, do hereby officially designate June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the town of Simsbury. It would be my pleasure to welcome a couple of people to say a few words. First, Ainsley Thompson, who's a student at the high school and also a member of Community for Care.
Hello, my name is Ainsley Thompson, and I am a rising senior at Simsbury High School. At this point, I don't think it's a secret that I am a proud member of the LGBTQ+ community. I have spoken about my sexuality at town meetings, forums for the high school, and at a recent meeting where Simsbury residents and Community for Care members discussed equality in race and gender in our town. People come up to me after every time I speak and ask me how I can be so open about my sexuality at my age. Usually, I don't have a response apart from, "I don't know, I just am." Today, I have a more concrete response. I speak out about my sexuality to make people in our town feel more comfortable about going on a date in public with someone of the same gender. I speak out to remind the closeted kids at my school that someone else has gone through the same thing as them, and that there are people who will listen and accept them. I speak out to remind others that the goal of pride is to find acceptance from all people, not just tolerance. I have been working with Community for Care this year to add my voice to their discussions. We have talked about the everyday struggles of LGBTQ+ members, and how we can make them feel accepted and welcomed. We have discussed the social pressures people feel in Simsbury to fit in, and how that impacts queer people's choices regarding dating, public displays of affection, and even coming out. We have talked about getting support and funding for gender and sex-related clubs at Simsbury High School. But most of all, we have talked about how we can make Simsbury a more inclusive town as a whole. A story I like to tell is that the first time I went on a date with a girl, I actually decided I couldn't pursue the relationship further because I was afraid of not being accepted in Simsbury. However, after the first time I spoke openly to strangers about my sexuality, I found a new confidence. I realized that in order for people to feel accepted by others, they first need to experience the empowerment that comes with accepting yourself. Community for Care gave me the opportunity to find that confidence in myself by letting me have a voice and be open about who I am, as well as not feel judged about something I cannot change. This, I believe, is what the goal of Community for Care is. Their goal is to give people an outlet to be proud of who they are, and lead the way in helping others feel that same pride. I could not be more excited to continue working with Community for Care on finding new ways to foster acceptance in our town. The opportunities I have had for leadership and impact within the Community for Care team are beyond what I have thought I ever would have. After tonight, it is our turn to show acceptance in any way we can. The smallest act of liking a pride post on social media, or putting a rainbow flag sticker on your car bumper can really make a difference, even if it seems like it won't. Tammy Baldwin, the first openly gay U.S. Senator, said one of my favorite quotes for gay pride during her Never Doubt speech at the Millennium March for Equality in 2000. She said, "There will not be a magical day when we wake up and now it's okay to express ourselves publicly. We make that day by doing things publicly until it's simply the way things are." To that, I ask that we all work to be the leaders that help make that day of equality sooner rather than later. Thank you all for your time tonight. I am honored to have been able to speak to you, and thank you for taking the time out of your day to celebrate a community that deserves celebration.
That was really, really powerful. Thanks for sharing that. Second, I'd just like to ask Aleah Vandal to come up and say a few words about the Facebook pages that she started just in the last couple of weeks that are getting some really exciting traction.
I did not know I was going to be saying anything, so sorry.
I gave her the 15-minute warning.
But I just wanted to thank everybody for coming, and just thank the support of Simsbury as well. My wife and I moved here last summer, and since we moved, we really felt like there was a great base of support. And I was so excited when First Electman Wellman was really open when I emailed him and invited us all here, and then when I made the events on Facebook, and everybody was so for it. So I'm really looking forward to the momentum that we've gained, and then moving forward together. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, I just wanted to extend an invitation to anybody watching on TV or anybody in the room, that if there's anything that you think that we can do in Simsbury to make this community the welcoming place that we strive to be, I hope that you'll approach me or any member of your Board of Selectmen and keep that dialogue going. So with that, I welcome you to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I also would not be offended.
This is the awkward moment where everybody gets up and leaves. It's okay, we're used to it.
There's more zoning to come. Come on.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Very nice.
You sure?
Yeah, right.
Please, please.
Last time somebody did that, got arrested.
Okay.
Something we said?
All right, I'm going to turn now to the First Electman's report.
Oh, yeah, that's why they left.
Thanks, Melissa.
Wait, you're doing the report? Can I leave too?
Oh.
Well, push on.
All right, a couple of ribbon cuttings. Metro Beast is holding a ribbon cutting in their new location at 690 Hot Meadow Street on June 25 at 5:00. That is tomorrow. We're also pleased to welcome Soma Grill, which recently opened in the 1820 House. Their ribbon cutting will be held on July 9 at 5:00 p.m. And I'd also like to welcome Board and Brush to Simsbury Town Shops. Board and Brush is a do-it-yourself wood sign workshop. Opportunities to serve our town. So there are more than a dozen boards and commissions that serve our town, whose members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And I frequently meet people who are interested in opportunities to serve but don't know how to get involved, or don't know what opportunities there are, and that's why I'll be including a standing section in my First Electman's report with current vacancies. So boards with current openings include Board of Ethics, Community for Care, Design Review Board, Historic District Commission, Insurance Committee, Public Building Committee, Recycling Committee, Technology Task Force, and the Tourism Committee. Anyone interested in applying for these opportunities can submit a volunteer form online through our town website. There's a link on the town clerk's page, or a link right in the version that's emailed out tomorrow. And anyone who has any questions about any of these opportunities can reach out to me or any member of the Board of Selectmen. The Simsbury Library Summer Reading Program is back, and people of all ages are encouraged to participate. It runs through August 10. You can log your reading to earn prizes. Each time you visit the library, you'll get a raffle ticket to win more prizes, and each week the library will be doing different giveaways. This week is a tote bag, and next week is a free swim pass to Simsbury Farms. Based on the forecast, I think we're going to need it. Bring Your Bike to Rotary Park on Iron Horse Boulevard, July 10 from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. There will be free helmet fittings provided by the Simsbury Police Department, bicycle safety checks provided by the Bicycle Cellar, and a frozen treat for all who attend. Thank you to the Simsbury Public Library and the Bicycle Advisory Committee for helping organize. The Aging and Disability Commission and the Simsbury Special Education Parent Teacher Organization invite all residents of Simsbury who have a disability and their families to join us for a picnic, ice cream truck, and entertainment at St. Catherine of Siena Church. The event is free. It'll be taking place on July 27 from 11:30 to 1:30. A big thank you to Kane's Market and the Aging and Disability Commission for providing the food. RSVPs are requested by calling the Senior Center at 860-658-3273. I'll turn it over to Maria for the Town Manager's Report.
Great, thank you. I have a few items for you under Board of Selectmen Business. As you may recall, the Economic Development Commission held their pilot business roundtable event on June 12. Westminster was gracious, and we held that event there. It was a beautiful location. The first event was a real success. We had approximately 25 local business owners that attended. EDC members facilitated each table. We had a number of our key staff members involved with economic development at that event, and it was just great for obtaining feedback in terms of, again, what's going well, what's not going well, how can we do better. So we're hoping to use that feedback, again, to improve how we, as a town, do business, how we can better support our business community. And because the event was so successful, and we did receive such positive feedback about the event, we are planning to try and do this on a quarterly basis and hold the next one in September. So we'll continue to report out on how that endeavor is going. We are now accepting nominations to name the new park that will be at One Old Bridge Road. This is in follow-up to your establishment of the Naming Rights Committee. We did do an announcement recently to the public and have created a mechanism for folks to send suggestions to us. I think within the first 24 hours, we had already received about 10 suggestions, so people definitely have an interest. We are gathering those responses. The Naming Rights Committee is scheduled to meet at the end of July to begin reviewing those suggestions and plan to bring a recommendation back to you probably by late summer or early fall. For the Open Space Advisory Duties, you had recently provided that responsibility to the Open Space Committee. They had formed a work group to look at the land acquisition guidelines that we currently have in place. Those have not been updated since the 1990s. So there is a work group of the Open Space Committee that is going to be working on helping us to update those guidelines. But additionally, what we don't have is a stewardship policy. We also don't have land management policies or practices in place for most of our parcels, and our agricultural leases are fairly dated. So that work group is really going to be looking, again, at that in a very comprehensive manner. That effort is mostly being staffed through our Culture Parks and Rec Department and our Planning Department. But again, I'm very much looking forward to the work that they are going to do and what we'll ultimately be reporting back to you all in terms of recommendations for policies. For departmental news and notes, just a reminder that beginning July 1, we're going to begin our one-year FINE-free pilot program. And again, this is to help remove the barrier of fines and increase our access to our library materials and services. There will still be an opportunity for folks to contribute financially to the library in lieu of the FINE. We'll have library support jars available throughout the building. But as also a reminder for folks, we will continue to assess fees for our high-demand materials, such as the Library of Things and museum passes. And lastly, for planning, FEMA has contacted the town regarding the engineering models that are being associated with the flood insurance rate map updates. You may recall this from a few months back. Surveyors were recently out. That project continues to be underway, and we've just attached that correspondence to this report for your reference.
Okay, great. Thanks, Maria. Moving on to Selectmen Actions. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective June 24, 2019, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $7,568.99, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item B is the proposed ordinance that we had a public hearing on a few minutes ago. That would essentially clean up an omission from our last charter revision, where the number of planning and zoning alternates were omitted from the town charter. This ordinance fixes that. If the Board is comfortable, we can adopt that tonight. Is there any conversation or questions before we do that?
My one comment is, it's something we should address, especially in light of going into the summer season. You frequently need the alternates on those land use boards, so I would be in favor of moving this along tonight if possible.
Okay, great. Is there a motion effective June 24, 2019, to adopt the proposed ordinance on the election of alternates to the Planning and Zoning Commissions as presented, which will be effective 21 days after publication in a newspaper, having circulation within the town of Simsbury, and further to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item C is the Transfer Station Operation Agreement.
I'll be recusing myself.
Okay. The town contracts with Paines to operate the bulky waste facility off Walkit Road. The current five-year contract is due to expire, so there was an RFP that was issued. One proposal was received, and it was from Paines. Staff shared with us that the cost is comparable or even lower than other towns pay for similar service. We have in front of us a three-year contract with two one-year renewal options. One thing I'll note that's probably of most public interest is that the annual fee is increasing from $10 to $20 that people pay when they use the facility. Anything, Maria, that you wanted to add?
No, I think you covered it well. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions or conversation?
Eric, I would just say, I like the extensive amount of documents that were included in this. I really appreciated the way it was presented, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and with the staff comments and everything, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Is there a motion effective June 24, 2019, to approve the bulky waste transfer station operation agreement as presented, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the agreement, and further move effective July 1 of 2019 to adopt the bulky waste transfer station fee schedule as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Item D is vacation carryover requests. Our union contracts require that any unused vacation time in excess of 10 days needs to be reviewed by the Board of Selectmen. The request in our packet is for four employees who, due to heavy workload or staff vacancies, were unable to use a portion of their vacation time. In addition, any vacation carryover by the Town Manager needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, which is why that's in there as well. Maria, is there anything that you wanted to add on this item?
Just in regards to the carryforward for me, it's a little different than the rest of our workforce. So the rest of our workforce, if folks are carrying up to 10 days, that can simply be approved by me as the CEO, since I report to you all, looking at personal rules and regulations. While my carryover request isn't in excess of 10 days, because it's under 10 days, we thought that that would still require your approval.
Were there any questions or conversation on this? Okay. Is there a motion effective June 24, 2019, to approve the vacation carryover requests as presented in the table below, and requiring Selectmen action, and further stipulate that the approved excess vacation days must be used on or before December 31, 2019? Any unused approved excess vacation days still on the books as of January 1, 2020 will be forfeited, and should the employee leave service for any reason, including but not limited to retirement or resignation, they will not be paid out for the approved unused excess vacation days authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So Item E is a proposed resolution to encourage the public to take preventive measures from feeding wildlife. What we have in front of us is a non-binding resolution, where we would essentially be asking our residents to refrain from putting out bird feeders, intentionally feeding wildlife of any kind, and leaving their trash out overnight. The goal, of course, is to do what we can locally to keep bears and other wildlife out of our neighborhoods, protecting people and pets. And I'll also mention that it's also feeding animals isn't good for the animals. Before we discuss this, I'd like to provide a summary of how we got here, and I acknowledge in advance it's lengthy, but the context, I think, is a our residents to refrain from putting out bird feeders, intentionally feeding wildlife of any kind, and leaving their trash out overnight. The goal, of course, is to do what we can locally to keep bears and other wildlife out of our neighborhoods, protecting people and pets. And I'll also mention that it's also feeding animals isn't good for the animals. Before we discuss this, I'd like to provide a summary of how we got here, and I acknowledge in advance it's lengthy, but the context, I think, is important. In 2018, our police received nearly 600 calls for service related to bears. That was about 70% higher than the previous year, and we can see the calls for service are increasing year over year if we look at the past five-plus years. Last October, Sean Askam, Chris Peterson, and I, along with the Town Manager, the Police Chief, our Animal Control Officer, met with two wildlife officials from DEEP to share what Simsbury has been experiencing. In that meeting, we discussed various solutions, but what was clear to me were a couple of things. First is that there's very little the towns themselves are able to do to proactively mitigate the bear population. Wildlife policy is managed at the state, not the local level. And since bears have no natural enemies, their numbers will only continue to increase, and DEEP's estimate is in the neighborhood of 10% a year. Our Town Manager and our Police Chief produced a fantastic memo that provides data on Simsbury's bear population and the calls for service, and we've shared that memo with our state representatives, with neighboring towns, DEEP, and other state officials who've asked. It was my hope that the state legislature in their spring session would pass meaningful legislation. I supplied testimony. I spoke to the Chair of the Environment Committee, which is where wildlife legislation was discussed. No meaningful legislation was passed. Last week, Sean and I met with Chief Bolter, our Police Chief, to discuss measures that we can take at the local level. What we're recommending, and it was endorsed by the Public Safety Subcommittee, is a non-binding resolution that would be accompanied by an education campaign that's intended to remove the sources of food that attract bears and other wildlife to our residential neighborhoods. I wanted to see if there's anything, Sean, that you wanted to add.
Eric, I thought that was a great summary. I mean, just to put a little bit of a finer point, you're right. There are very few tools in our toolbox. We did explore potentially passing an ordinance at this level from prohibiting folks from feeding wildlife, and we could use the police as an enforcement mechanism. We opted not to do that at this point for a number of reasons. One, it's very, very hard to enforce and costly, and you're pitting neighbor versus neighbor, which is not an ideal situation. And two, it hasn't necessarily shown to be any more effective than the educational route. So, that's why we're going down the educational route with this. We had a pretty, I think, a pretty substantial discussion, probably one of the most engaged ones we've had in a while, of public safety on a particular topic around this, with just, you know, again, an understanding of this is not a, we're going to send out a memo and put up a nice little thing on the website and walk away from it. We're really putting together what I think is a concentrated educational effort over the next couple of months culminating with September Fest and some other fall activities when folks are back in town. And we got a substantial amount of support from the Police Department and from the rest of town services. In fact, the chief's putting together a video, much like, you know, the ones where we see the cruisers driving around on snow days and such and how dangerous it is to be on the roads, and everybody likes it on Facebook. The chief's going to put together what it looks like to actually respond to a bear call. Why are we doing that? Because I think the other piece of this from an educational standpoint, and if you're going to do this later, tell me to be quiet, is I think residents, we want to make sure we inform residents not only the dangers of feeding, and again, not only bears, but coyotes and raccoons and other animals as well, but what you can expect from the Police Department when they show up. What are they able to do and what are they not able to do? Because anecdotally, when I talk to residents, well, why, the police do nothing when they show up? Well, that's not true. They're there, driving around the neighborhood, informing folks, making sure that everybody's protected. But if folks are expecting use of lethal force or other measures, that simply is not what they're empowered to do at this point but for if an individual's in danger. So, the video is meant to be informative, so please share it when it comes out to, again, set the standard. And again, we don't want to discourage any calls for service. Please continue to call. The chief was adamant about that folks should call if they feel threatened, if there's a bear in the neighborhood when there's children around, especially around dismissal times, bus times. We should absolutely continue to have those calls for service. By no means is the town or the chief or anybody in the Police Department dismissing the need for the services. It's merely a mechanism to set the expectation for what's going to happen when the Animal Control Officer comes out or one of the patrol officers. It is interesting the chief shares anecdotally as well that, as we've all grown up with the bears over the last few years, the bears have become very comfortable and used to all of us, to the point where they greet Officer Rudowitz at the side of his car. And we're not sure if they want to give him a hug or if they want to, looking for a sandwich, but it's funny, but it's unfortunate, and it shows the close proximity and how quickly and these animals are adapting. I mean, they follow, and I'm sure your drivers can attest to it more than we can. They know when Paines is coming. They know what neighborhood to be in, at what time. They know when your cams are out, et cetera. So, again, we're trying to get ahead of the game as much as we can here from an educational standpoint, so continue to look for this. But this really is one of those community efforts that we need everybody to do their part, and it sounds kind of hokey, but it's much like the fire hydrant ordinance, right? We can debate whether ordinances are a good idea or not. The point being is that when there's three feet of snow on the fire hydrant or your neighbor's house burns down and you didn't shovel it out, it'd be pretty damn tragic. So, this is the same kind of situation. Even if you're putting out bread or bird seed or other, oh, it's no big deal. Well, if somebody's kid or somebody's animal is harmed, it's pretty damn tragic, and we want that to not happen anywhere, but certainly not in this community. So, we're asking for everybody to do their part.
Thanks. Very well put, Sean. I wanted to see if there's anything else anyone else wanted to add or if there was particular conversation around these proposed items.
Just one quick thing, sort of piggybacking on that, is I know a lot of the homeowner associations and condo associations do have rules in effect about bird feeders, and they do sort of police themselves. So, if you have a neighborhood association and you have a chance to talk to your neighbors about it, you know, you can all work together on this, you know, because they have certain months of the year. I know some associations say, okay, you got to take the bird feeders down in March, you know, you can feed the birds in the winter, then they got to come down. So, you know, there is a compromised position here, and I know we have a lot of bird watchers and people who enjoy the birds a lot, and I know my mom is one of them, but people do manage to live within the rules and to help each other, you know, follow the rules. So, it's not supposed to be punitive, it's just supposed to help everybody.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other dialogue before we?
I guess I'll jump in, Eric. I think this is a great first step. Hopefully, we don't have to go any farther. The real focus of this, and what I'm pleased to hear, is that it's really to remove the food source as best we can. And, nothing personal, bears can go to all the surrounding towns. But, that said very much in jest, but the reality is, they are here, and we need them not to get comfortable with us, and they need not to frankly think of our barrels as a food truck that they can go to.
Right.
Just one more. Mike, you reminded me, Eric, if you permit me, the Public Safety Committee did talk as well, and we encouraged the chiefs and leaders of various departments to talk to their counterparts in other towns. Because Simsbury is not going to solve this problem on our own, but for two reasons. One, we felt that it was important for Avon and Canton Grahamby and all the other, you know, neighboring communities to understand our efforts and perhaps they'll adopt the same. And then, two, if we're all exhausting all of our resources at the local level, perhaps that will then get the state to act. Because, you know, not suggesting that we haven't done everything, and the only thing I would correct you on is, I feel like this is a second or a third step.
Yeah.
And I think we've been on top of this for a while, but again, our options are extremely limited. And again, not to be, you know, to stir things up, but we did have a very large 400-pound male bear enter a home earlier this year, and that bear was euthanized as a result of it. But that's a scenario that ended tragically for the bear, but could have ended tragically for the gentleman's grandchildren that were typically over at that time as well. So, again, this is a when, not an if, and we need to do our part, so.
Thanks, Sean.
All right.
Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019, to formally encourage residents to take preventive measures from feeding wildlife? More specifically, residents are encouraged to not use bird feeders, particularly during warmer months, not leave trash outside overnight, and not intentionally feed wildlife of any kind. And further, endorse an education campaign to get the word out about the above measures.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And again, I want to say for the folks here and on TV that this is an ongoing conversation. I welcome your feedback. I welcome your ideas. We're going to continue the conversation with our Police Department, with our elected officials in Hartford. And, again, this isn't the beginning, but it's certainly not the end. And I appreciate everyone's work on this. Moving on to item F is proposed sale of tax liens. So, this item stems from our town's tax sale policy. There was a parcel on Hot Meadow Street, which is a portion of a larger developed property, and when a revaluation was done in 2008, the parcel was mistakenly categorized as buildable, giving it a much higher tax burden than it should have. What this proposal here tonight would do is fix the error that was made and only require the property owner to pay back taxes on the corrected assessment. The amount that would be paid under this proposal would be just over $3,600, which reflects the taxes that they would actually owe had the mistake not happened. Is there anything, Maria, that you wanted to add on this item?
Covered it well. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any conversation on this item? Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019, to adopt the attached resolution to sell and assign the tax liens pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 12-19H in order to resolve the tax arrears associated with the Halmar, Inc. parcel on Hot Meadow Street, map HO2, block 403, lot 1A?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item G is around the proposed goals for the Town Manager. A couple of weeks ago, the Town Manager discussed her proposed goals with the Personnel Subcommittee. Those goals are broken down into categories such as human resources, labor relations, economic development, financial management, and special projects. It's intended to provide a framework for the work that will be performed in the next 12 months and beyond. The goals have not been prioritized, which is something that the Personnel Subcommittee will do at its next meeting. We'll bring back that prioritization for approval by the board, but what I'm hoping to do tonight is just get feedback and input and hopefully agreement that these are the right goals before we do the prioritization. So, having said that, was there any questions or conversation?
Does that make sense?
No.
Okay. Are there any, was there anything that anybody felt was missing or lacking that we should consider? Okay. Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019, to adopt the Town Manager's goals for the July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, as presented, and further, that the Personnel Subcommittee assist with prioritizing those goals?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on now to appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019, to appoint Paul Kelly to the Technology Task Force with a term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Next is a proposed appointment to the Retirement Plan Subcommittee. So, this is where the Board of Finance is making the formal appointment and we're recommending the appointment. I just wanted to share that Sean, Chris, and I interviewed six people who were interested, and yet again, we were blown away by the experience and the caliber of the people who stepped forward, and I just want to really thank everybody who stepped forward. Is there a motion effective June 24th, 2019, to nominate Thomas Potter for the appointment by the Board of Finance to the Retirement Plan Subcommittee as a community member at large for a two-year term?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item C, so this one, a little bit of conversation would be helpful. There's a recommendation that came from the Republican Town Committee for someone who's interested in serving on the Tourism Committee, and that would increase the committee's membership from 12 to 13 people. Staff did some research to see how many people the Tourism Committee should have, and they found that basically it's fluctuated over the years, and at one point was as high as 16 people back in the 90s. What I would recommend we do tonight is to appoint Jennifer Leinbach to the Tourism Committee per the RTC's recommendation, but I'd also recommend that we refer the question to the Tourism Committee about the ideal membership number. Personally, I don't have a strong feeling what that number should be, but I do think that we should codify what that number is. So, that's why I landed where I did.
Can I ask a question about that?
Of course, Sharon.
I know when we were assembling the new EDC, we had a lot of discussion about the Tourism Committee's role in EDC deliberations and decision-making, and I was wondering if this somehow fits into that discussion. Are, can we encourage the Tourism Committee to consider how they're going to do it, or do we have to ask the EDC to take up that question?
That's a good question.
Because it seems like we should at least give some attention to that item, which came up a lot, you know, when you and I were working on the EDC.
Yeah.
The ordinance and the makeup of the committee, and it seems like we should pay some special attention to how the Tourism Committee is going to use its assets, you know, in the committee, and they're all terrific people who have a lot of great skills in that area. But maybe we can figure out how those people can help EDC with their mission also.
Yeah. So, I think that's a good question, and I think it would be a missed opportunity not to pursue that question.
I mean, if they're going to have a discussion about the makeup of the committee and how many people they need, that it's time to talk about what their role is going to be on a bigger stage there.
Well, with that, I appreciate people's thoughts on what that would look like. Would we ask the Tourism Committee to, you know, consult with the EDC and ultimately come back with a recommendation on what their role would be in conjunction with EDC?
Or do we have to ask the EDC?
I would ask EDC, because Tourism would report to EDC, in my opinion, from a ground standpoint.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Right.
And that's sort of the framework that we had discussed originally, but it doesn't seem like that has moved forward at all while the EDC has, you know, been getting off the ground and they've been doing some great things. I want to make sure that doesn't get away from us in this, because that's an important piece of economic development, and I think that when we were discussing it, the goal was to have those two missions converge together, not keep going apart.
Yeah, that's right. Would, Mike?
I think that's a really good point, and I think having Tourism have that discussion with EDC would be really helpful, and I think those two groups should also talk about how big the Tourism could be, should be. I'm fine where we are now because we typically appoint people. But, you know, you can, we've all been involved with groups where the committee got too big, and that just becomes very difficult to do anything. And everybody thinks somebody else is going to show up, and then nobody shows up, or you end up with 20 people in the room, and it's tough to get something done. That would be my only concern, and I think the way you're approaching it is fine. I'm in support of that.
Okay.
Eric, I'm supportive, too. Just one subtle difference is, I interpreted that we want the Tourism Committee and the EDC effort to be well-integrated. I'm not convinced that Tourism has to necessarily report into EDC to achieve that, so I kind of leave open what the best structure is. But I think Sharon brings up a really good point, that it would be good to facilitate some conversations as to how that part of what we were looking to have happen actually occurs.
So, would the ask tonight be of the both committees to work together on this question? I'm just, I'm...
That's why I use the word "report," because I don't want Tourism going down an economic development road and EDC going down a different road.
Right.
So, however we call it, they need to work together, is the requests slash whatever word you want to use from the Board of Selectmen. But they should be on the same page. There should not be two paths, there should be one integrated path. However that's structured, I don't really care, honestly, as long as that's the way it is.
Okay. So, is what I'm hearing?
I think it has to start with the EDC, because, I mean, Tourism has a very specific mission, and they know what that is, and I'm fine with the composition of the committee as, you know, with this appointment. But I do think it's time that we start looking at where they converge. And that probably needs to initiate from the EDC.
And I think that will inform perhaps the right number of people. Or at least. They go together, I think those two recommendations are right.
They go together, and, you know, we may need to have some representation on those. And they'll have enough people to do that.
Okay. Would anyone like to attempt a motion on this?
Sure. Chris, let me know if you disagree with this motion.
No, I'm relatively open to this. I mean, does the request for them, for this conversation to initiate, that doesn't need to be a formal motion necessarily?
Just integrate it into the...
Right.
I'm just, I mean, so we have a motion before us, which is, well, Sean, if you have a vision.
I was just going to say move effective June 24, 2019, to respectfully request that the Tourism Committee retheir membership. Additionally, that the Tourism and Economic Development Committee review their roles and integrate their vision for economic development with respect to Tourism. And the purpose of this referral is to seek both of their viewpoints on, again, the number of members and how they can work together in the future. A response is respectfully requested by July 31, but if there are extending circumstances, we'd be open to an extension.
Well, perhaps by our August meeting. We only have one meeting in July.
How about the first meeting in September?
I think they might need a couple of months.
I mean, it's hard to get quorum.
It is during the summer. So, yeah, the September 4th.
By the first meeting in September. And again, we're not telling anybody what to do here, but this is...
No, we just want them to talk about it.
Charge to... This is an opportunity to work together here.
Yeah. But to be clear, we're asking for a single recommendation from the two committees.
Correct.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. We have some additional appointments. Is there a motion effective June 24, 2019, to appoint the following people? Gina Morgan as a regular member of Culture Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiring January 1, 2020, to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Stephen J. Spala. Ryan Burns as a regular member of the Public Building Committee with a term expiring January 1, 2022, to fill the vacancy created when Lawrence Boardman's term was not renewed. Charles Chip Houlihan as a regular member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring January 1, 2021, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Kevin Crimmins. And Deborah Clifford as a regular member of the Simsberry Housing Authority with a term expiring April 1, 2024, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Brian Doonan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Review of the minutes from our regular meeting of June 10. Okay, they stand as presented. Are there any Selectmen liaison or subcommittee reports? Cheryl?
Well, you already hit on my aging and disability one.
Do it again.
Okay. This year, a little different than in years past where the picnic in the park has been in August. It is now going to be July 27. So that's just a little different in case you're used to attending this event in August. We just want to draw your attention to the difference. It will be the same lovely event sponsored by the committee and hosted by St. Catherine of Siena Church. All are welcome, all families with disabilities. And if there is a group home residence which would like to attend, they are also welcome. We just asked that you are VP, so we know how much food. Keynes has very generously supplied the food for many years now. And aging and disability volunteers man the grills and serve the rest of the food. So it's really a great event. So I would encourage you to attend if you are so inclined. The other item is for the Community for Care. I loved hearing from Ansley tonight. She's been a great addition to the committee. But on a more somber note, the Community for Care would like to thank the friends and family of Mary Hashmi for their various, very generous donations to social services earmarked for the Community for Care in memory of Mary, who died on June 1. Mary lived in town for 45 years. She was an active member of the Tooten Hills PTO, a Girl Scout leader. She co-founded the Project Outreach at Tooten Hills, Simsberry Steering Committee for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth, Simsberry Citizens for Equality Education, and the Connecticut Youth Forum. And she was awarded a Hometown Hero Award at one point. We will miss her on the committee. But so far, over $1,000 has been donated for the Community for Care in her name, and we are very appreciative of that.
Sean?
This is on the finance side. I know we're going to, it's a correspondence item, but a special note and congratulations should go to Town Manager Maria Capriola, Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby, and Finance Director Amy Meriwether for their first bond issuance, debt issuance. I know, not necessarily exciting for the folks at home, but I am thrilled. Over $8 million in general obligation bonds were issued last week at a near historic low of 1.63%, with a sizable number of other bidders in there as well. So it was a really, really good day from a debt issuance standpoint. And again, why is that important? Because if folks are counting at home, 1.63% is generally lower than our inflation rate in this country. So if you look at that, we are getting debt as, about as cheaply as you possibly can get it, which goes in line with our overall fiscal management policies in this town that were started a long ago but have been continued very, very well by the town manager and the rest of the folks, that we take it very seriously when we borrow money. We take it very seriously when we bring a budget item forward, both capital projects and, you know, the $100 million budget overall. And again, this is an outside, completely independent marketplace reflection of all of the things that we value in this town, that when we do something, it makes sense, it's for value. We're thoughtful about our projects. Yes, do we have a mil rate that is challenging for some folks? We absolutely do. And do we take that very seriously? We do. And this is another example of trying to be very responsible with that. So again, we were a firm AAA rating, both on the geo-bonds that we went out for and our overall rating, which, again, some folks might not think is a big deal, but we hold that to be very prideful in this community, and I think is really awesome. So not something that everybody gets a shout-out for every day. But I know this board does appreciate that. That's a substantial amount of work preparation, not just for the debt issuance, but into the budgets, all the policies, all the management that goes into it. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Well said, Sean. And I actually wanted to...
Sorry.
I was reading the S&amp;P report, and I wanted to just call a few lines out for the public, because this is, it's really amazing. We were, you know, lauded for very strong management with strong financial policies and practices, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity. And it's really a collaboration between this board, Board of Ed, Board of Finance, and amazing professional staff who guide us the right way. Thank you. Any other liaison, subcommittee reports? We kind of skipped ahead a little bit, but that's good, Sean.
It's technically finance.
Yeah, yeah.
We did the bears already.
Anything else out of communications that anyone wanted to bring up? Just, I just wanted to highlight that the town manager's performance review is happening this summer. It'll be taking place in July and August. The Board of Selectmen will be conducting Maria's end-of-year review, really starting on July 13, where we'll get a survey. And we're not going to be doing the full review since we did it six months ago, but we'll have the opportunity to add anything in any of the different categories. And a summary of the review will be made public, I expect, in the late summer timeframe. But it's something that I want the public to know that we're doing because the Board of, you know, the biggest responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to hire and provide guidance to the town manager on priorities. So I'm glad it's something that we're doing.
Agreed.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now that is a record.
You know, Chris, I was going to...
Chris, you know, we thought you were really happy with it, but it's back to that.